All right Jim, we're ready when that one.
Yep, flag, get the flag over there on the right.
I'd like to call a meeting to order. We'd like to start as we usually do by inviting everyone to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, would you call the roll please?
Jim Donbeck.
Here.
James Shiloh.
Here.
Christian Koppel.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Beth Maria Evans.
Here.
Alex Grados.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
The quorum is present.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
So moved, Jones.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Koppel.
Yes.
DeVito.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Grados.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Shiloh.
Yes.
Donbeck.
Yes.
Motion carried.
NIA consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda?
So moved, Jones.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
DeVito.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Grados.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Shiloh.
Yes.
Koppel.
Yes.
Donbeck.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Spartan awards.
We've had a very successful year in terms of activities, not just athletics, but activities in general. And this time of year typically we take some time to recognize students' clubs, teams, activities that have competed or participated this year. So we're going to start with the middle school. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Dren.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Justin Drennan. I'm the Dean of Students and Athletic Coordinator at Sycamore Middle School. We're very excited tonight. We have just about 100 athletes to recognize in various sports for their athletic accomplishments this season. We'd like to start with track. I believe we have Coach Knoblock and Coach Nelson here to talk to you about the track season.
So this year in track, we had a pretty successful season. We've had three people make the state podium, which is more than we've had in a long time. So if we have any track state athletes, why don't you come on down, please? We have Caitlin Page. Colin Hughes. And Andrew Neeran. Good job, guys. For the next team, I am also coach of the Scholastic Bowl team, which is an academic competitive team. We face other schools in the region. And this year, we also had a very successful season. We were one sudden death match away from making it to the state round. So the regional champions, why don't you guys come on down? We have Alec Eiffel, Miles Doty, Jay Snyder, Fiona Long, Emily Mellon, Olivia Busse. Busse?
Bussey.
Bussey. Maddie Solomon, Camden Johnson, and Eli Ciolino. Nice job, guys.
Next up, we have bowling. We want to recognize our both boys and girls bowling team. They are coached by Brian Kolberg and Andy Hampton, and they will talk to you about the bowling season. Okay, Mr. Andy Hampton is in California, so our other assistant coach Riley Runawicki is here with us. Our bowling season is pretty short. We are about three to four weeks, which we have a sectional and then a state tournament. But both of our girls and boys team both won their sectionals this season, so if we can have them come down. Not only did we win both of our sectionals, but both of our teams obviously made it to the state tournament where we made it to day two. So congratulations. We'll start with Chrisman Shackelford. Jordan Ziegler. Ryland Jordan. Savannah Wood. Briann Perkins. Isaiah Millay. Ryan Cos. And Patrick Lathrum. So that was our team. Thank you guys very much. Next up, we're going to recognize the dance team. Are there any members from the dance team here tonight? Well, let me go ahead. I'm going to read off the names, so bear with me. I'll go quickly here. The members of the dance team, and if there is anybody here, please come on up. We had Nora Benson, Amaya Bomar, Ashlyn Dakin, Nora Friex, Elena Gilson, Kinley McCoy, Emma Meyer, Vivian Meyer, Taylor Peabody, Ava Roots, Abigail Saragetti, Mackenzie Talish, Leah Tinsley, Quinn Wymer, and Aislinn Witness, I'm sorry. Dance team. Next, we'll move on to the wrestling team. Are there any members of the wrestling team here? You can come up as we start to call your name. Do we have a coach yet from wrestling? No coach. All right, members of the wrestling team, we had Faisal Alharbi, go ahead and get your medal. I'm just going to call if everybody. Burke Bishomer, Luke Bojovic, Chase Cook, Dylan Curtis, Sawyer Davis, Seth Diaz, Joshua Emmert, Ethan Fredrickson, Aiden Gemberling, Violet Groom, Dean Hanson, Daniel Hua, Colin Hughes, Connor Colenbach, Zaven Maldonado, Maddox McRoberts, Jaden Midasek, William Moska, Jack Nordstrom, Clyde Knott, Carter Paulson, David Ruiz, Liam Schroder, Carter Sibley, Logan Signarella, Nash Sullivan, Taylor Sullivan, Sawyer Valdez, Carson West, and Tyler Nguyen, all members of the wrestling team. Next up, we wanted to recognize, we had two athletes that did very well at the Special Olympics this year. So our two athletes that represent our middle school at Special Olympics, Sam Smith and Liam Hackler.
Good job, guys.
And then certainly not least, or last but least, we have the girls basketball team. So the eighth grade girls basketball team, come on up ladies. Was this back-to-back seasons, NCJC champs? Back-to-back NCJC champions. Eighth grade girls basketball, we had Lena Berry, Molly Butler, Macy Kalindo, Liliana Galindo, Abigail Hardesty, Yenisus Hernandez, Sadie Lang, Brynlinn Long, Caitlin Page, Lena Pappas, Jada Prombo, Kelsey Ryder, Liliana Vasquez, and Amariana Washington. That completes the middle school portion of the Spartan Awards. Thank you.
While the middle school is filing out, I'll use my teacher voice, there we go. Still got it. While the middle school is filing out, this is a tough time of year to get high school athletes here. Their spring season is winding down. Some of them have just finished, a couple of seasons are still going. So we're actually not going to be able to do high school awards at this time. We might try to do them in June or a later date. But in their absence, just want to thank many of you who work with those students or may have students that are participating in spring activities at the high school level. It's been an unbelievably successful spring, especially for high school. Couple of the teams just wrapped up their seasons unfortunately, but baseball and softball are still going. And boys tennis just wrapped up this weekend, high school track, boys track just wrapped up this weekend, brought home a state championship on a four-by-four relay, and a third place. So tough time of year to get high school sports here. But please join me in recognizing all our high school athletes, and then we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda. Which takes us to service awards, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Reine.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our annual staff recognition night. It is truly a pleasure to see staff members from all of our schools and across all of our departments come together to celebrate the dedication, passion, and hard work of the incredible people who make this an amazing place. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing the remarkable individuals who have devoted themselves to the success and well-being of our students and our school district. This special evening is dedicated to celebrating the milestones and achievements of our staff members who have reached significant years of service and/or retirement. Your commitment to education and the positive impact you've made on the countless lives is something the entire community should be grateful for. Thank you for your incredible service and your passion for education. Tonight, we celebrate you and the impact you have made on this entire community. We will start with our 10 years service awards. As your names announced, please come all the way down. See Mrs. Vins, she has something for you. And then please make your way to the far side, and Lauren is going to try and get a picture of each group, each milestone together. 10 years, Jill Anderson. Kevin Bolts. Jennifer Branstrom. Betsy Brantner. We're going to get a few in a row here. Michael Buckner. Laurel Copeland. Julie Coyle. Greg Dodario. Heidi Girdes. Jordan Grubbs. Chris Heran. Adam Klassen. There we go. Bridgette Klein. Harold Nack. Brian Kowalski. Lacey Lance. Tori Mas. Kristy Mickless. Lisa Orkfritz. Nathan Peterson. Myself. Thank you. Jamie Sauber. And Crystal Templin. 10 and a half years. Adam Lang. Jennifer Miller. 15-year honorees, Sarah Alexander. Phoebe Ballantyne. Neely Berger. Patrick Burris. Drew Davy. Amber Everly. Craig Hagemeyer. Andy Jordan. Dana Mahler. Jim Marie Peak. Jennifer Schroeder. Nicole Stuckert. Scott Vannard. Lisa Winters. Rhonda Woodrick. And Lisa Wright. 20-year honorees, Katie Allison. Ray Borgman. Jake Brenz. Nicole Cabral. Carrie Countryman. Darcy Didio. Kim Garcia. Sarah Neller. Lenell Lind. Ryan McDonald. Christine Mertens. Kristen Pavlek. Sandy Pritchett. Joe Ryan. And Tiffany Ryan. Our 25-year honorees. Stephanie Bridge. Mark Ekstrom. Ken Goodman. Doug Kelly. Ross Martin. Denny Miller. And Tony Young. Our 30-year honorees. Jason Kavanaugh. Amy Jahant. Joyce Majeris. Rich Majeris. And Jolene Ward. We have a 35-year honoree. Before naming her, I must say, there's a lot of people from transportation out here tonight, and a lot of them are being recognized, but a lot are just here to support each other. And I think it's the most we've had from transportation ever, so it's awesome to see them. So our 35-year honoree, Lori Holbrook. So that was 30 and 35, and those people aren't retiring. We are moving on to the retirees here, and to do that, I'm going to hand things over to Steve.
It's my pleasure to kick off recognizing our retiring staff members who have served our school district, our community faithfully, served our students, our staff, served each other. It's an unbelievable achievement to have reached this point in your career, and we couldn't be prouder that these folks are retiring from our school district, or we can send them off in a deserving way. So I get to kick things off. And to do that, I'm going to ask, so the way that we do this is that I'll recognize our administrators who are retiring. Principals will come down and recognize their staff that are retiring. Lacey Lance is our transportation director. So I'm going to ask her to come down and help me rec... Yeah, you get to go first. And I'm not going to say anything, I'm just going to let her walk down here in front of everybody and just...
Just, we have Bob today. Bob, can you come stand up here so I can talk about you while you're right next to me? Everybody clap for Bob. Bob has been with us 10 and a half years. Steve reminded us today that we had to give a speech, and as, like most things, I'm just going to wing it, like we do. Bob, you're taking forever, let's go. I know. So Bob is a trip driver for us, so some of you who do athletics, coaches, will recognize Bob. He has probably at some point in his career driven your trip somewhere. His claim to fame is that he drove the softball girls to state, and that is the reason they won, if you ask him. Yeah. Most of you know me and know that I have a pretty inappropriate sense of humor that is unmatched by this one. Yeah, frequently, I blush in his presence. It's because you're so good-looking. Bob is one of the most important assets to us because he volunteers his time to take athletic trips when no one else can. So he shows up for the kids all the time. He is one of our most requested trip drivers. Anytime anyone goes to Chicago, they want Bob. He fills a need that is hard for us because we have a lot of folks that want to leave before the school day gets out. So without people like Bob, those trips couldn't go. So he is a dedicated service member to us. He did not want to retire, and I assume at some point we'll find something for you to do to come back. Like most people in Sycamore, once you retire, you just come back in another capacity, so that's what Bob will do. But I've only got to spend two and a half years with him, and it's been some of the best years of my professional career. So tonight, we honor Bob.
I'm going to backtrack, and I get to recognize Kristy Crawford. Kristy, I know Kristy's here somewhere. There she is. Should I wear my Southeast sunglasses to do this?
Absolutely, I should have worn mine.
You should have. So Kristy kind of holds a special place in my heart. When I was first hired for this position, I planned out transition meetings, opportunities to come and meet at every school with every department. This was the winter of 2020. Got the job in December, started meeting with folks in January, February, all the way up until March, when the governor told us that we were closing schools. I missed one meeting because we couldn't meet anymore. My first meeting was at Southeast Elementary, home of, at the time, Southeast Mustangs. Still have my banner, it's in my office. It's something that's very dear to me. And so the first opportunity I had to really interact with folks here in Sycamore after I had received the position was at Southeast. And the staff there, I think, really projected the atmosphere and the feeling that you see at Southeast. It's very much a family atmosphere. That's because the staff is so close and so tight, but it's because they've had a great leader for the last several years who've brought them together, who supports them as if they are her own, just as she does the students in the hallways every day. When I was at that meeting, and every time since I was at Southeast, you get that feeling, that warm feeling of people feeling like they belong there, that they are committed to what they do, and that comes from great leaders like Kristi. In addition, one of the things I've always appreciated about Kristi is when I'm in the building and she's out in the hallways, students are always coming up to her and saying hi, and sometimes it's a hug, and they just want to interact with her. When she's out in public, the exact same thing happens. I've been downtown at the Back to School Bash, and there's kids and families everywhere, and they come from all around to see Mrs. Crawford, to say hi to her and give her a hug, and of course, at that point in the year, they're getting ready to come back to school. I've been fortunate in my career to work with educators who are student-centered, but Kristi embodies that. Every conversation we have, she's advocating for opportunities for her students, opportunities in the classroom to support them academically in terms of their social-emotional wellness. She absolutely wants the best for them. So it's one thing that I've really learned from Kristi and that we're going to miss at Southeast. And finally, on a personal note, I'll go back to that first experience at Southeast. You know, again, it was right before COVID. COVID hit after I started, and it was a rough couple of months. There were tough decisions that had to be made, the board knows that, I know that. And I remember speaking with Kristi, and I'll never forget this, we were about six or seven months into the school year, and she just said, hey, I know it's been hard, but this is a great community, and this has never happened before. We're going to get through this, be strong, keep leading, keep making the decisions that you are right for our school and our community. And that kind of encouragement got me through some pretty tough times. So I just want to thank Kristi personally, as well as professionally, for everything that she's done. You will be missed, but you've left a legacy that our next principal is going to be able to pick up and run with and continue to move us to new heights. So please help me in congratulating Kristi Crawford. Our next honoree is Tony Parra, but I don't think, is Tony with us tonight? Tony happens to have been the custodian at Southeast, so unfortunately, we're not able to recognize him, but please join me in a round of applause for Tony Parra. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Rucker to recognize Mr. Boyd.
It's not me, don't clap for me. Don, do you want to stand up here next to me awkwardly? Yes. I was, yeah. I was explicitly told not to wing it by many people, because if, many people know that I'm not afraid of a microphone, so we could be up there for half an hour. Perfect. The closer, the better. Today, we celebrate the retirement of someone who has quietly and diligently contributed to the heart and soul of our school for many years, our night custodian, Mr. Don Boyd. Oh, don't you wait, there's so much more. I'm going to get like six round of applause, I'm going, great, they're going to cry. All right. In every school, there are individuals who work, whose work goes often unnoticed, whose impact is deeply felt. Mr. Boyd is one of those such individuals. For his tenure at South Prairie, he has been the unseen guardian of the school, ensuring that our environment is clean, safe, and welcoming for all of us, even having to chase the occasional roof climber off of South Prairie. Look at him, he can climb a roof, all right. Mr. Boyd, your dedication, hard work, and attention to detail have not only kept our school in excellent condition, but have also set a standard of excellence for all of us. You have approached your work with pride and a sense of responsibility that speaks volumes to your character, whether it's making sure every classroom is spotless, ensuring the hallways are safe, or being there to fix problems, no matter how big, how small, or any artwork that's on the bathroom stall. A lot of weird texts he sends me, but you know, it's, he's just sharing information. Our staff and teachers, for staff and teachers, Don has been more than a custodian, he's been a supportive colleague, always ready to lend a helping hand, a kind word, or a hug. To our students, he has been a friendly face, someone who shows by example the value of hard work, humility, and dedication. I also know how much the Oscar Genius staff and students will miss you coming to visit them at the end of their day. Don, as I said before, I'm extremely grateful that we were able to shift your hours so they overlap with the students. At the end of every day, Mr. Boyd posts up at his corner and gives all the kids handshakes or secret high fives that he's created, there's a lot of this going on and this, but those kids, as they walk to the bus. Students have shared that this consistent, albeit simple gesture, has helped them seal their day, however it went, in a very positive manner. Students look forward to that three-second exchange every day, leaving South Prairie with a smile every single time. Don, I will dearly miss our after-hours talks about pot roast recipes, 60's music, and how you practice for church choir. So if you linger at South Prairie after about 6:00 PM, you might hear sultry baritone in the halls, you know. Not everybody knows that, little secret. As you embark upon this new episode of your life, I hope it's fiddled with happiness, relaxation, and well-deserved rest. Retirement is a time to enjoy the fruits of your labor, to spend more time with loved ones, and to pursue new passions and interests. On behalf of the entire Sycamore community, I want to express our deepest gratitude. Thank you for the many years of service and countless ways that you have made South Prairie a better place. Don, over here, we've got to take a picture. This is what it's like to be famous, all right?
Thank you.
We didn't do the choreography, now you can move over here. Don Boyd, everybody.
Was Robyn Sheridan able to make it with us tonight? Okay. How about a round of applause to recognize Robyn's retirement? How about Janelle, I didn't see Janelle either, did Janelle make it? Okay. Please join me also in a round of applause for Janelle Fleeter. Did I miss one? There we go. Diane Stalarsky, did Diane make it tonight? All right, how about a round of applause for Diane? Did Julie make it tonight? We've got a streak going in the wrong direction. How about a round of applause for Julie? Did I miss one? Oh. Before I give the mic back to Tom, we're going to keep him at bay for just a second. Riley Richardson, I don't think I saw Riley either, did Riley make it tonight? All right, please join me in a round of applause for Riley Richardson. Now it's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Rucker back up to the microphone to honor Dot Lewis.
Dot, do you want to stand awkwardly next to me, as such Donald did? Give it up for Dot Lewis, everybody. All right, as I said before, we don't leave me free with a mic, so I wrote my thoughts down. There's an ad lib section, so don't worry. I'm honored to be able to celebrate the remarkable career of a truly extraordinary educator, Ms. Dorothy Dot Lewis. It is both a joyous and bittersweet occasion as we bid farewell to someone who has dedicated so many years to shaping young minds and nurturing their hearts, the hearts of our students. Dot, your commitment to education and your passion for teaching have left an indelible mark on the Sycamore community. For 20 years, you have been a beacon of knowledge, compassion, and inspiration. Your classroom has been a haven for curiosity, where curiosity is fostered, creativity is celebrated, and every child feels valued, supported, and loved. Your teaching goes far beyond the curriculum. You have instilled in your students a love for learning, a sense of wonder about the world, and the confidence to pursue their dreams. You have been there to celebrate their success, to guide them through challenges, and to encourage them to always do their best. Your impact on their lives is immeasurable, and the lessons that they have learned from you will stay with them forever. There are two large examples how I learned how hard Ms. Lewis loves her students, and that's parent meetings, she invited me to a parent meeting, it was about some behaviors that were happening, and she was setting up a situation to support this student. And she invited me, and I was, of course, I'm going to support her. She's like, you don't have to say anything, just be there, and I wanted my kid to be in her class. When you hear about her talk about this student who's been making some maybe poor choices, the way she talks about that student empowers that student, the parents change their mind about that student, and they were like, yeah, oh, right, yes, they're on her team because she just exudes how much she loves that student, and it just, it made those parents even a closer team with her. So she sets up these great relationships with the families, and you see that, you saw that at her party where she had a family come, or a student come back when she taught in Geneva, over 20 years ago, just to say, hey, thank you, and that just, that shows a lot. The other way is safety drills. Now, when we have safety drills, you want to be in Dot Lewis's class, all right? Because you, that's where I want to be, because she's going to take it on, and she loves every kid in there as if we're her own, and she's going to fight however she needs to, to get out safe and sound, I promise you. There are people that have reflected upon that and said, I want to be behind Dot, I'm following her, wherever she goes, we're going. But that intensity and love goes so many ways, and you see that in how she cares about her students every single day, whether it's a safety drill, whether it's something that didn't go so great, or something that went really well. But she, it's very clear that she loves her students. Mrs. Lewis, back to the script. Your South Prairie family has been inspired by your unwavering commitment, your innovative teaching methods, and your genuine care for each student. Your commitment to staff's social interactions through our social committee has initiated many longstanding traditions, and your presence at South Prairie has been a source of strength and positivity, and your legacy will continue to inspire us all. Our hallways will not be the same without your team-building and academic activities you weave throughout your transitions. I will miss the tug-of-war games that we play right before dismissal, and we try to always beat those third graders, if I can, but I'm usually sore the next day. And I know that I will continue to hear all the memories shared from your classroom when the seniors come back to visit. As you embark on your new chapter of retirement, we wish you all the happiness and fulfillment that you so richly deserve. May your days be filled with relaxation, new adventures, and the joys of spending time with loved ones, grandma time, and the endless job of puppy training. We know, we both got puppies, you know, so we got stories. You know that you will always be a cherished member of the South Prairie family, your contributions will never be forgotten. Also, you agreed that I can use your number for subbing emergencies, so don't go far. Thank you, Mrs. Lewis, for your years of service, for your dedication, and for your love that you have shown to every student that has walked through your classroom door. We are grateful for the difference you have made and the legacy you leave behind. Thank you, Dot Lewis, everybody.
Mr. Clavon, please join me up here at the podium. All these pages are for Jim. Not really, I was going to read it for Kristi too, but I ended up kind of winging it also. So Jim also holds kind of a special place in my heart because he's a middle school principal. I started as a middle school teacher, 8th grade science teacher, many years ago, did that for several years, and then became a middle school principal. Middle school is a different place. It's just a different place. It's not elementary school, you know, kids are young, and they love to see you, they come hugging you like they hug Kristi all the time, and they're not high schoolers who are more independent and able to drive and do those things. Middle schoolers think they're independent, but they're not really. They still need money for lunch, they still need rides home, they still need all sorts of stuff. They start to form opinions because they're growing up and experiencing the world, but as my wife would say, I met my wife when I was still working in the middle school environment, they don't have a filter, so whatever they think just comes out of their mouth. So you have to have kind of a special disposition to deal with that. Jim has that. Jim is a quiet leader who served our middle school as the assistant principal, also as the principal for many years, and has that disposition to work with middle school students. Not easily riled up, not easily offended by some of those unfiltered comments that students might make, is focused, like I mentioned with Kristi, is being very student-centered. There's a lot that goes to working with middle school students, and you have to keep everything in mind as you're doing that, the academic piece, the social-emotional piece, but they are growing, they are growing more in every facet of their life. The only time individuals grow more than that is when they're birthed to five, and then there's kind of this lull, and then they go through this explosive growth at that age when they're adolescents. You have to have a special disposition to work with students like that, and Jim has that, and we're going to miss that. Working and leading staff in a middle school can also be a little bit challenging because a lot of times you have elementary students, or elementary teachers, who went to school to be trained as an elementary teacher, but the opening was at the middle school. Or like me, I was a high school chemistry teacher, but when I was looking for a job, the only job that was available at the time was as an 8th grade science teacher. So you have to tolerate people who they think are just going to do it for one year, and then let them out the door and move on. But oftentimes, what you find is that people really love what they do at the middle school environment. There's a lot of collaboration, and they get kind of the lay of the land in terms of what goes on in the middle school, but it takes a special leader to lead those staff, to give them opportunities to grow and to learn and to do what they do. So Jim, we are going to miss you. I know that you've got some plans in retirement. But part of that plan, I know also, is just to enjoy retirement for a little while until he kind of settles into a new rhythm. So I am sure you will find that rhythm. I appreciate your leadership and your friendship. Make sure you check everything with Jackie, and then everything's going to be fine. Please join me in congratulating Jim Clavon. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Brian Swanson, our high school principal, down to the podium.
All right, come on down here, Scott. Usually when Scott's coming to this stage, he's getting involved in an orchestral dance, but tonight, it's going to look a little bit different. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is certainly bittersweet. We celebrate not just the end of the school year, but the retirement of a beloved member of the Sycamore High School community, the one and only, Mr. Scott Horlock. For 22 years, Mr. Horlock has been an integral member of the Sycamore High School Science Department. While I wish it could have been longer than this, two years, the time I have spent working with you has been truly fantastic. Last year was my first year in Sycamore, and I was the assistant principal, and I spent time meeting with all of our staff, and I really vividly remember my conversation with Scott. I could tell that he just had a true passion, not just for science, but for Sycamore High School and our community. Walking in his classroom, you can just feel the excitement. Students love being there, a true testament to an engaging learning environment that he fostered. Faculty and staff have benefited from Scott Horlock's positive speeches. Faculty and staff have benefited from Scott Horlock's positive spirit, his willingness to collaborate, share ideas, and create a supportive environment made this, makes this a truly special space. The green hallway and our orca's shows won't be the same without his infectious enthusiasm, friendly smile, and sweet dance moves. While I wish I could review all the testaments from both colleagues and students, we would probably need to be here all night. But I do want to share a few with you this evening that capture truly who Scott Horlock is and why he's going to be incredibly missed at Sycamore High School. A colleague shared with me, Scott is a professional educator in every sense of the phrase. His skill set, experience, knowledge, wisdom, and professionalism are those of an educator who goes above and beyond to serve the needs of our learning community. Scott's dedication to and passion for our learning community is evident in connections he builds and maintains, practices and policies for which he advocates, and pride he feels for its success. Scott takes on the role of Department Yoda. Someone else shared, more importantly, Scott's efforts to constantly improve pedagogy revolve around a singular focus, ensuring that students learn. In his classroom, Scott's lesson plans are engineered to meet curricular learning targets that define what students need to learn. He uses assessments in a variety of formats to determine if learning has occurred, and he intervenes and remediates when learning has not occurred. Scott recognizes that student assessments are a reflection of their learning and his effort for them to succeed, and he takes that responsibility to heart. Scott challenges standard practices and status quo. He has the department on their professional toes, prodding them to expect more, to raise the bar, to use our resources to elevate student learning. Because he inspires a love for learning, Scott is deservedly respected and admired by both present and former students. Another one shared, Scott has been a valued coworker for decades. He is dependable, innovative, and always looking to improve his craft, even in his very last curricular unit. However, when I think of Scott, the word calm comes to the forefront. Scott is the epitome of patient. Not only does he patiently listen to questions and concerns from students, he smiles and repeats himself to coworkers who were too frazzled to remember it the first time. He has touched many lives here at NSHS classrooms, lunchrooms, baseball fields, local waterways, and on the dance floor. His retirement is bittersweet for those he leaves behind, but we honor and we wish him the best, and we will miss him dearly. Another teacher in our science department, who actually had Scott when she was a student here at Sycamore High School, said, "When I was a freshman at Sycamore High School, he was my biology teacher. The classroom in the class was challenging, but Scott has a quiet command and confidence in the classroom. I knew I could excel in whatever he asked me to do. Scott provided many of these thoroughly sought-after lightbulb moments. I felt powerful and capable with newfound understanding of the world around me. I thoroughly enjoyed the class and continued to pursue science throughout high school and college largely because of him." Scott, we're thrilled for you and your well-deserved retirement. There's no denying that we'll miss you tremendously. The impact you've had on this school, on both students and staff, is undeniable. You've left a legacy of curiosity, a love for learning, and a spirit of collaboration that will continue to inspire us all at Sycamore High School. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you. We wish you the best in your next chapter. May it be filled with adventure, exploration, possibly some dancing, perhaps babysitting, and even a chance to find a way to continue sharing your love of science. Let's please give Scott Horlock another round of applause.
There we go. It's Rachel Strack here tonight. Okay, 24 years. How about a round of applause for Rachel? Tom Davis. 27 years. How about a round of applause? Don Kavanaugh. Did Don make it tonight? 33 years. How about a round of applause? Dan Clicker got one ahead of me, man. It's my pleasure to turn things over to our board president, Mr. Jim Dombeck, to talk about this year's honorary doctorate honoree.
Don't leave yet. The, the good parts just... We're going to have to make a note to put the honorary doctorate higher up in the agenda. It's really a pleasure to be here this evening to award the honorary doctorate degree. It's the highest award that we can give out as a district. And it's a great pleasure to be able to do that. And the person we're about to present with this award is so deserving. It's, it's hard to, it's hard to explain, but he, he's a person who devoted quite a bit of time to the district. And his efforts really have elevated our district in the eyes, not only of our neighbors, but also of the entire state of Illinois. I guess without, without any further ado, I think he knows who he is. Steve Nelson. Steve, Steve and I served on the board together for, for many, many years. And we, we didn't always agree on everything, but when we disagreed, we did it in, I think, a civil fashion and used that as a model for the rest of the board and the district. And I think that was just a wonderful experience for, for me. I, I hope it was for you as well. I, I don't know how this man does it. He has devoted so much time to, to our district. And just for example, I got a list of some of the things that he's, he's involved in or has been involved in. He's the CEO of the Larson Darby Group, where he's the director of educational architecture. He's part of the American Institute of Architects, the Chicago chapter. He was a longstanding board member while he was doing those things. He belonged to the Sycamore Education Foundation, where he engaged in a great deal of fundraising for the district. He was part of the Sycamore Planning and Zoning Commission, where he represented the Board of Education for many, many years. He's, he was part of the Illinois Association of School Boards, Kishawaki Division Executive Board, Illinois Association of School Boards Resolutions Chair, where he actually did that for a number of years. And Illinois Association of School Boards IASB Distinguished Board Leader, Illinois Association of School Business Officials Delegate, Member of Sycamore Rotary, DeKalb County History Museum, Habitat for Humanity, Master's Academy, and you know what? The list goes on and on. I don't know how you fit this all into your life, Steve, but you did. And it's these activities that brought to notoriety our district, as I said, not, not just within our area, but across the state. And your dealings with the IASB certainly helped to raise, raise our standard, and it certainly helped to raise the way we're viewed by, by the rest of the state. So it's my, my great pleasure and honor to award you with this plaque and the honorary doctorate degree for this year.
You don't want to listen to me talk?
We'll give a few minutes here for people to exit. Although you're missing the best parts. Okay, the next item on the agenda then is audience to visitors. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board this evening? No one? Okay, we'll move on then. Communications, correspondence, informational items. Letters and newsletters. We certainly had them. Courtesy of the legislature. And all of their machinations here at the end of the legislative session. FOIA requests. There, I saw three. Is that correct? And, and all three have been answered, responded to? Suspension reports. You can tell it's getting close. You can tell it's getting close, especially at the middle school. And then committee reports?
Planning and zoning did meet at the beginning of the month. The only item on the agenda was a workshop to discuss a request from Brian Granger of Old Mill Park LLC. They basically wanted to amend the special use permit that had been approved years ago, I guess, for the development that would be across from the middle school north of that current senior living facility, the empty land that's now being developed there, that was approved for kind of a low-density installation. And they were asking for an amendment to that special use permit to basically double the number of units that were going to be installed, offering some single-bedroom options that weren't previously available based on customer demand. I would say that wasn't well met by the Planning and Zoning Commission, who I think were disturbed at the, the great increase in density over what had been previously approved. So I think they'd offered up some suggestions on, on looking at trying to reduce that density to keep it at least in the medium-density range, which I believe is between four and six units per acre. I think this one came in at 6.02. So that's been kind of tabled for now, and they're, they're going to work up some stuff and come back later.
Spartan Senate met for our final meeting of the school year. There, there was some recognition of graduates, and really, there wasn't a whole lot of new information to report back to you guys. It was a 15-minute meeting, maybe, so.
Any other committee reports?
North Grove School Association met, and they're gearing up for tours and opening up the schoolhouse. So as that starts to unfold, I'll send out some notice, or I'll, I'll ask Steve maybe to send out notice if anybody's interested in going and visiting the school.
Thank you. That would be great to, to know. If you haven't been there, it's, it's really worth the, worth the journey, so. Other committee reports? All right, we'll move on then to Assistant Superintendent for Business Services report.
Thanks, Jim. I have three bids that I'm bringing for your guys' approval tonight. The first one is our food service contract bid. So school districts are required to bid out their food service contract every five years. You can do it sooner than that if you're not happy with your food service management company. Our current company is Arbor Management, and we've actually had them for the last seven years. Because of COVID, our bids got pushed back, so we were able to extend with them for two extra years. We're very happy with them, but again, we were required to go out to bid per the ISB statute. So we sent out our bid packet. It's about 140 pages long. Goes through some pretty strict standards, has to be approved by ISB. There's specific dates in there that you have to meet. And then actually, once you open the bids, that has to be sent to ISB before it even gets brought to your local school board. So everything has been vetted by them. We had three food service management companies that bid on it. One was our current, one Arbor, Airmark, and then Organic Life. They're a newer company in the school food service industry. Arbor was the lowest bid, and per the ISB school code, you have to go with the lowest bid. And so that would be Arbor Management. So my recommendation tonight would be to approve that food service contract bid.
Just out of curiosity, what bids are posted on our website compared to not? Because I don't see a ton posted on the website. So is there a criteria where that's met? Or it's posted there? Or I'm just curious of the bidding process, I suppose.
For someone to bid on it?
Well, how, how do we solicit the bids?
So there's an approved vendor list that we're required to send it to. There's probably about fifteen different vendors that are on that list, and that has to be sent directly to them. It's also posted in the local newspaper.
Okay. So going forward, will we put them on the site or not? I guess that's where I'm confused. Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the food service contract?
So moved.
As presented? All right. Is there a second?
Second, Jones.
Discussion? Have we ever- Haven't had any problems with it, with Arbor, have we?
Nope. We, um, actually, we would be sad if we had to have them leave, so we were glad that they were the lowest bidder.
I was going to say, glad to, glad to see that worked out.
Yes.
We had Airmark before Arbor, right?
Yeah, we had Airmark before Arbor.
Yes.
But you pretty much have to go with Arbor anyway. I mean-
Yep.
Because that's what they'll say.
Yep, yeah.
So the only way you wouldn't go with the lowest bidder is for some reason they were disqualified if they haven't, if they didn't have something in their bid documents, but.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Evans?
Yes.
Brados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Papel?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, the next two bids I have are, um, are building and grounds bids. So Mark and I worked together on getting these bids out. The first one is for the Syc- Sycamore Middle School parking lot and driveway resurfacing. So this would be, uh, the, the, um, drop-off parking lot there. So, um, Mark was able to provide some pictures there. It's looking a little rough. They're due to have that resurfaced. So again, we put out a bid. We got a good response for this bid. We had seven companies respond to this. This bid is actually going to be paid out of the FY24 monies. It's going to be completed this summer. So we had, um, some money, um, in our budget for it this year. We had a budget of 185 for it, and the lowest bidder came in at 131,865. So it will be significantly under budget. Again, we're required to go with the lowest bidder for this. The lowest bidder is Manivale Construction. Not worked with them before, but, um, we've spoken with them and have references. So, um, we feel confident that they can do the job. And so I would ask the board to approve, um, that bid tonight.
Is there a motion to approve the Sycamore Middle School parking lot and driveway resurfacing repair bid? So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just quickly, uh, the change order process, because I know we ran into this before. Do we have to still, is like a contingency to some of these bids? Have to then bid out any change orders? Or is there a threshold for that?
So there would be anything over twenty percent, I believe, Mark? Was that the threshold, I think? Anything over twenty percent, we would have to bring back to the board and have you guys approve. But otherwise, um, that would just be part of the contingency. That's, that's part of that, yeah. We're not anticipating any of the undercutting that we had issues with at North Elementary. I think that's what you're talking about, Michael. We don't anticipate it being as bad as North was, so.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Brados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Papel?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried. Last bid I have is West Elementary, um, roof. This is actually an FY25 project. We had five companies bid on that. This is approximately twenty-three thousand square feet of recoating on the roof. This will get West all done, um, so they'll be good to go. So the budget for that, we had $200,000. And actually, the lowest bidder for that bid was at 224,680. So it was a little higher than what we had budgeted, which happens sometimes, so. But roofing systems, um, is, uh, someone who works with Tremco, which is the product that we're using on the roof. So those individuals were, um, aware of that company. We've spoken with those individuals also. That work will happen in July. So I would ask for the board to approve that bid tonight also.
So is there a motion to approve the, um, West Elementary School Roof Restoration Project?
So moved, Jones?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Papel?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Brados?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Good evening. I have three items under Superintendent's report. Uh, the first one is really a follow-up to the last meeting. We don't do this very often. I don't do this very often, don't like to do it. But on occasion, uh, members of the community who are disrespectful, act in an intimidating way, and, and there's a board policy on this that outlines the kind of behavior that's not allowed on school grounds, they can be banned from school property for up to a year. This process has changed a little bit over the years. There's a little bit more due process for members of the community where I enact this policy. But ultimately, in order for it to be acted, I initially ban an individual from the property if they've not complied with our policies. One of the new things over the last couple of years is that there is, uh, due process that the individual has. So there was a hearing at the meeting in March. But in order for the process to draw to a close, the board needs to formally act on it. I can, uh, ban individuals on a temporary basis, but I can't do that permanently, only the board can do that. So at this time, I would ask the board, and, and again, there was a conversation about this previously in executive session, which is allowed by law. Now I'm asking the board to actually vote on my recommendation. I would ask the board to sustain my recommendation tonight.
So is there a motion to sustain the recommendation of the superintendent to deny the presence of the parent on district property and admission to district meetings, school-related events, including athletic events and extracurricular activities and district ceremonies for a period of one calendar year, commencing April 24th, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call?
Shiloh?
Yes.
Papel?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Brados?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, the next item I have for the board this evening is board policy revisions. These are first readings, uh, of multiple kind of groups of different policy updates. We've caught some things that weren't updated, that needed to be addressed, some that we had sent to I A S B that, that weren't updated. As we sent them to I A S B, they manage our, our press policies online. This was a very thorough, I would say, list of policy revisions as well as realignments. Some policies that should have been updated, but weren't, had been changed, uh, updated since. So I think this goes back to 2008. There was a group of policies included tonight that were, um, not properly updated by I A S B. In the meantime, those policies had been updated. So realignment really is, I think, one of the, the best term for that. Looking at Mrs. Vins, because she's done a, a lot of the, the work on this. So, um, I would ask the board, um, let me back up. I'm presenting all of the revisions this evening on first reading. I would ask the board to approve them on second reading in June. And if the board does that, that brings us up to speed and, and everything that we know of as current, based on what we know, but also based on, um, an audit that I A S B did on our policies on our behalf.
Just to clarify, issue 114 is the current, um, list of revisions. And then the other document is the, the audited list that need changes made.
Absolutely correct. So periodically, uh, the School Board Association sends out what they call press policy updates. Press is the, the service, the acronym for the service. And every round of updates gets a new number. So we're at 114 right now. Actually, we know 115 is coming over the summer. We're so excited about that. But-
It, it's coming very shortly.
It is. It is coming soon. So this, i- if these are approved in June on second reading, it can, it brings us completely up to date. And then we can worry about that next round of policies, 115. All of the rest of the policy updates are, are a response to the policies, um, that needed to be updated that weren't previously.
So the realignment, no, 114 is what they already had. Realignment is the changes? Or just the revisions are the changes?
Policy, or press update 114, uh, are, are the most recent round of updates from the School Board Association. Everything else, um, were policies that either we or the School Board Association caught that weren't up to date.
The current updated, this is what we missed in the past. And then that's the, the current round that we're updating, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So no action necessarily required this evening, but it sets the stage for the board to approve, uh, these policy updates and realignments on second reading in June. Any questions for me?
I- is there any way to, um, kind of, uh, make certain that future agenda items are correctly, uh, updated?
Yes. The, the short, the easy answer is, is yes. That also is going to be something that Mrs. Vins helps me with. So moving forward, let's use press, uh, update 115 as an example.
Right.
Well, when that one comes through, it's just that round of policy updates. The board will have an opportunity to review those and policy committee, uh, recommend, uh, those updates to the rest of the board, um, this summer, early fall. When those are completed and approved by the board, we send them to the School Board Association. When they've updated them, they send the final updated copy back to us for inspection. And we have that, um, in terms of our, our, our protocol, our process. When those are updated, going through them with a, a fine-tooth comb to make sure that we don't, that this doesn't happen again. So, um, it really is a matter of I A S B, the School Board Association, uh, completing the updates properly, but then, uh, us getting eyes on them when they come back and making sure that we haven't missed anything.
So, so do they notify us when, um, when they've updated, uh, the, the policy based on the most current packet? Or how, how do we, you know, do, or do we just put a tickler in, in our files or something that says to look at it?
They notify us, so we get an email notification? Kelly gets one and I get one a- as well, so.
So they say that, uh, it's been updated? And that's our chance to go in and, and s- make sure that they did what they were supposed to do?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, more attorneys today than ever before, so I hope. I hope they get it right from, from here on out.
We do too. Any other questions for me about the board policy revisions? Okay. Uh, the third item I have for the board tonight's a little bit longer. And kind of like the facility work, the, the roof repairs, the, the parking lot repairs, I think this is an opportunity for the, the board to invest in the future of the school district. So this has to do with the board considering approval of resolution to purchase the property, 1947 Bethany Road here in Sycamore. Uh, and I've got a, I've got a picture of this on the map here in just a minute, but I'm going to go through all the background. One of the things that's been on our radar for the last several years before I got here, but it was certainly on our radar since I've been here, is, is the need to, um, address health and life safety requirements, but also updated code, um, repairs and updates that, that are going to need to be done on the administration building. I think everybody knows in the community that the administrative offices are located at the former Central School on 245 West Exchange. That building was built in 1926. We're nearing a hundred years. We're not quite there, but it, but it's pretty close. And it served, I would say, valiantly served the, the community in that capacity up until mid to late 1970s. Afterwards, the Central School was, was changed to, uh, administrative offices. So the administrative offices for the school district have been in, in that building, uh, since about the early to, to mid 1980s. So, uh, about forty years. That includes, and I just listed everything, um, so that the board, as well as attendees tonight can see, the superintendent's office, uh, human resources office, learning and teaching, business services, student services, and technology. It includes our district data center, as well as our, uh, district instructional technology offices. Communications offices, including printing, uh, building and grounds. The office for Mr. Ekstrom is up there, as well as, uh, Oscar. S E F is included in there. Uh, I missed that, but the district also leases some space to the Northern Illinois Association, has done that for the last several years. During the most recent, uh, inspection of our architects, they identified about 6.67 million dollars in repairs that are required or going to need to be done to the administrative offices. So we knew that that was coming. It was part of the ten-year health, life, safety audit that was done about five years ago, uh, just before my time here in the district. 3.37 million of those, uh, of that work is required through health and life safety. That's part of the school code. There are an additional 3.3 million dollars in necessary updates. Many things in the administrative offices have been grandfathered in, in terms of local codes, because it's such an old building. But once you start doing work to the building, those come into play. So when we do the required health, life, safety work, that 3.37 million dollars in work, we have to start changing everything else that doesn't meet current code. That's the 3.3 million. That's 6.67 million dollars invested in a facility that's all, almost a hundred years old. And, um, while it served the district very valiantly over that time period, investing, um, that, those kind of resources and in building that old, um, threw up some red flags and some questions for us. So while we knew that time was coming, we also started to look at, uh, look at other options, one of which was moving the district administrative offices to a separate location. About a year and a half ago, uh, the NICOR Call Center, which is the building located at 1947 Bethany Road, came on our radar as a potential alternative. Really hadn't been on our radar, but it was kind of brought to us in a roundabout way. It took us a long time just to get in that building and take a look. Calls and emails with NICOR, NICOR is a large organization. Took us a while to get in. But all at once, this spring, we had the opportunity to get in the building, just have an opportunity to look around, to, to even consider whether or not it, it might suit our needs. So that first initial inspection happened on March 1st. At that time, it was the, the realtor that had kind of gotten us in contact with NICOR, Mr. Stucker, Mr. Reinick, myself, and Mr. Ekstrom, our director of building and grounds. The initial inspection was pretty favorable from our perspective in terms of how we thought it could serve the, the school district. And, and really, um, immediately the administrative offices. But one of the things I'll hit on a couple of times is just, there's an opportunity for future, as well, future considerations. Since then, we've had the opportunity to walk through with our architects on multiple occasions. Not only through the building, they've been on the roof. If I remember, remember correctly, Mr. Ekstrom was up there on the roof with them, kind of looking around. They did not perform an inspection in, in as much detail as the health, life, safety inspection was five years ago. But they were in the building on multiple occasions. They were on the building and around the building and mo- on multiple occasions. So they've looked in every nook and cranny, opened up closets, looked in air handlers- So they've looked in every nook and cranny, opened up closets, looked in air handlers, and, and given us a pretty favorable, I wouldn't call it report, we didn't get a written report from them, but walking through with them, just a pretty favorable opinion on the state of the building and the opportunity that it provides. Following those inspections and some, some conversation at the district office, we think that this property is an ideal location for the administrative offices, as well as future opportunities in the school district for these reasons. Property is available for 2.3 million, and it provides an initial cost savings of 4.37 million. So much less than the required work that's gonna have to be done at the administrative offices at Central School. It was built in 1982. While that's got some years on it, it's a lot newer than the 56 years, it's 56 years newer than the current administration building. So one of the advantages is that it's ADA compliant, for example, has a working elevator. That's just one of the things that we would have need, we would need to do the administration building if, if we move forward with investing in that structure. Property's been very well maintained. That's one of the things architects said over and over again. Couldn't believe that it was as well maintained as it was, having been empty and vacant for as long as it was. It's temperature controlled. I guess you get to do that when your utility, the gas and electric, comes at maybe a different cost. But one of the things that our architects mentioned right away is that it was temperature control that, that allowed it to, the building to, to stay in a lot better shape than it would have if they'd turned the heat down and, and let it sit. Portion of the property was constructed for office space, kind of in the middle portion of the building. I'll point that out here in just a second. But there are two large areas on the north and the south side of the building that, that provide a lot of future flexibility for this, the school district. That middle portion could serve for the administrative offices immediately, as well as some lower space in the building that could move, that we can move the warehouse to immediately. Our warehouse is currently on Maple Drive here in town, just a couple blocks away for the administration center. There's an estimated cost of about $250,000 for minor repairs prior to move in, as well as a little bit of cleaning and the move itself. Again, the other portion of the property includes some pretty large open spaces that, again, provide a lot of flexibility for future use, use within the school district. In addition, you'll see in just a second, that the property totals 15 acres. Half of it, roughly 7.5 acres, is currently additional green space. So also offers a lot of flexibility for, for the district for the future. One of the things that came, came to mind immediately was relocating the transportation department. Buses take up a lot of space. Mechanical shop takes up a lot of space, but there's a lot of green space behind the current building, the parking lot, to do things like that and provide some flexibility for the high school in the future. So just some, some basic costs and expenses here. I mentioned the required health, life, safety improvements. It's about 3.37 million. Required code upgrades, 3.34. It's total of 6.674 million. Purchase price is, is 2.3 million. There's an initial investment of approximately 250,000 to move in. So really, the initial savings is about 4.124 million. We've done some work on utilities. We don't have all the information. I highlighted the electricity below there. We don't have that information quite yet from NICOR. We actually believe gas and water are gonna be pretty similar. The current administrative building is not very energy efficient, so we lose some, some heat and some cooling there. Water is based on usage, so we're not adding staff, we're just moving staff. So we expect that the water, water costs would be about the same. There are no known health, life, safety issues at 19, at the 1947 Bethany Road location. If it were purchased, it does become district property and will have to be part of any future 10-year health, life, safety surveys. So if it's purchased, that'll, that'll be a building, and just like the administration center was inspected for health, life, safety work as well. Future costs, there would be future costs to prepare the building for other future use, but that depends on the scope of work. We feel like that's something that, that we can look at and phase in over time. We've been in the current administrative building for about 40 years. Opportunities like this don't come up very often. If we were to purchase it now with the idea of, of using it in different ways in the future, we can phase those things in over time. One thing that's not included on the table are figures that would include the potential sale of the administrative building and the district warehouse. So we have had interest in both properties. It's come to us a couple of times during my time here. I think there's some, actually some pretty strong interest in the warehouse building, as well as some interest in, in the administrative building. But any sale price for both of those properties is not included here. The picture on the left is really from the brochure. It's not a very good one. It shows the, the main entrance there as you pull into... It's hard to see even from up here. As you pull into the front on the west side of the building, that's the, the main entrance. The picture on the right is just a bird's eye view of the property. You can see where Bethany Road is there on the bottom of the picture. There's a red rectangle estimating the, the 15 acres of property. And you can see where the front half is, is where the building occupies space, as well as the parking lot. There's a generator in, in back of the building, bigger than the one that we've got at the administrative building, but it would allow us to put the data center there and, and make sure that the, the data center keeps running in terms of, in the event of a power outage. The building, you can see the, the dark colored roofs there, the white portion, that middle portion is, is, is an open area where there are administrative offices on both sides of that. So again, immediately office space available in the middle of the building, and then large open areas that we think could be pretty flexible on the, the north and the south side of the building. And then the warehouse space underneath. Purchase of this property can be done using health and life safety funds. It's been certified by our, our architects, as well as the regional superintendent of schools. Because the purchase price is less than the required updates to the administrative building. So because the 2.3 million cost is less than the 6.67 million, we can use health, life, safety funds for that. We have some health, life, safety funds in balance that would pay for that. Would not have to sell any bonds to purchase the building. We wouldn't have to impact property taxes to purchase the building at all at this time. This fits in with the long-term facility planning that we've talked about. Really focused on the, the school buildings where instruction happens. We've done a lot of work to the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school over the last several years. The high schools got a lot more of our discussion over the last couple of months. And over time, this needs to continue to be a focus, but this is an opportunity that, that popped up that we feel like is also an investment in the future of the school district. Again, would save the district 4.37 million upfront, less the cost to move in, investment in the district's future, would resolve one of the long-term facility issues that we're currently facing and would provide room for consolidation of operations and/or instructional space in the future. As I said before, opportunities like this are rare. I think we've done our due diligence. We've had some conversation, which we're allowed to do in closed session, for the purchase or lease of property. So this has been something that's been on our radar. Actually, in all honesty, I was a little frustrated that we weren't able to make more progress just to get in and see the building, but when the opportunity presented itself in February, we wanted to take advantage of it. Again, if the board approves the resolution to purchase the property, selling the administrative building and the district warehouse would generate some additional revenue to offset the cost. One of our concerns was Northern Illinois Alliance, not, no, it is association. Got that one right. We've contacted them and let them know that the, the administrative building might be sold, so they have looked at other opportunities to move their offices. We have not kept them in the dark, and we'll work with them to, to facilitate that transition if the board supports the purchase of the property on Bethany Road. It's a lot of information, but I'll pause here and see if there's any questions.
Something that just popped in my head. If NICOR is bigger than the current admin building, would it be possible to move NIA into it? Or would they not be interested in that?
We did have that conversation with them, and, and they weren't interested. They appreciated us offering and, you know, having the conversation. But they've located a couple of properties in, in the area.
Okay.
NIA covers a large amount of square miles. Gosh, they go to the suburbs to the east and, I think, all the way to the river on the, on the west. So they, they span a large area. They have multiple offices throughout their territory. They'd like to stay in this area, but they found a couple of, of properties. Of course, we're also, they're, they're also looking for much smaller space. So they found a couple of properties that they think will fit their needs, but we did approach them about that.
Okay. I don't think it's a huge issue, but the 6.67 million for the health, life, safety was, is that, are those numbers based on when that study was done? Or have those been adjusted in recent years for the inflation?
They have, they have been adjusted.
Okay.
I wanted current cost, not, not original cost from, from several years ago. So those are adjusted for, now, estimates, right? You know, architects, you know, make their best estimate. They're, they're good at that, probably not to the penny, but they have been adjusted for current time.
Thank you. It's my thinking, I, I support the purchase, however, I think we should wait and get some more public input instead of adopting this on first reading. I think that would be a wise thing to do, to show that we, we value what people think. And we'd like to give them an opportunity to share anything they'd like to share about this, and also show them what this will get us. I don't know if we could get some better photos or something like that, but sort of visuals of, we need this, you know, we did it for the parking lot. See, the parking lot's bad, we need to bid to replace it. Show this, tell the same story for, for this building is where I'm, is where I'm coming from.
I guess I would just push back and ask what kind of feedback would change our action or your opinion on the, on the recommendation to move forward?
I think negative feedback would probably be what would push back.
Well, I get that, but I'm just saying, if they're, whatever negative feedback they provide, your answer's gonna be, okay, we'll spend the 6.67 million instead, or?
I mean, I, I would say, I sit with Alex on this thought. I, I don't know what I don't know. So I guess, coming from a place of perpetual ignorance, I mean, I just, it's been for sale for eight years. I don't think eight years and two weeks are gonna make a big difference.
I guess I don't see the point in not waiting a couple weeks, weeks to get some feedback or get sort of disseminate this information to the public better. I'm failing to see the downside.
The downside, as I see it, is timeline related. I mean, you're, you're taking a month off of the total time it's gonna take us to prep that space and prepare our move for the next school year. And so every month that you eat into the summer is gonna impact that, that timeline in some way. That's my, that would be my primary concern.
I think a, like a special board meeting would probably be called for then in that circumstance, so we don't wait till the next board meeting and we can keep that timeline kind of front and center. As I agree with you, Eric, we don't wanna delay if this is something that...
How are we gonna make the public aware of it in two weeks?
I think this is sufficient, you know, just publicly talking about it.
So publish it in the newspaper?
Post it on the website.
I don't know how, I mean, I don't know about soliciting input. I think if anything, just having the information out there is enough, but I don't...
Do we risk losing the current bid by waiting? I mean, how are they, we don't risk losing anything by waiting?
But there, there's always a risk that somebody comes in and...
Right.
And makes a, a bid or an offer. I think Alex said it's been on the market for a while. I don't know if it's Michael or, or Alex said it's been on the market for a while. There is a, is risk there.
Well...
Because we'd definitely be saving money by purchasing it, as opposed to trying to continue on with the 40-year-old current administrative building, so I don't know.
Well, I, I, maybe I misunderstood. I thought we were in contract. There was some sort of contract with NICOR.
What I was asking, what I'm asking for tonight is to approve, authorize the purchase of it. We have a purchase contract that's not executed at this point, so there is no, NICOR has accepted our, our offer, but they're not committed to that until the board approves and we, we execute the agreement, the purchase contract.
Okay, so there's no commitment on their end until the board?
Not yet. We spoke to our realtor today, and I, I think, it took us a while to get their attention, but now that we've got it, I think they're interested in moving forward, but they're not committed until the, the board has approved it, we sign off on it, and send it to them for, for approval.
This is, it's a very nice building. From everything that you guys have told us, I'd like to see it too. I've driven by it numerous times. I understand we've had somebody inspect it, but it wasn't a very in-depth inspection compared to what we have for the administration building. And I understand that that inspection might happen after the purchase, or maybe during that process, but there still are, to me, some unknowns that I'm, I'm wanting to try and flush out a little bit before we, we move ahead with the purchase. That's where I'm coming from. And I think that could be wrapped up in the next, I think it wouldn't take long to get that information.
I don't know that, I understand where you're coming from. I don't know that, short of hiring architects to, you know, spending more money to do an inspection is gonna get us much more detail. Again, they were, just so the board knows, they were in every closet, every nook and cranny, in the ceiling. The tech, the data center in the building has a subfloor. They were down in the subfloor looking at the, the wiring and on the roof windows. It, it's not the 10-year health, life, safety inspection, but I would, I would say it was thorough.
But if we purchase it, we'd have to do the 10-year anyway?
That's required by school code. Every building has to be inspected every 10 years.
So we, we'd already have had that done. Would that carry through? So it's either we do the, pay for the inspection now, or buy it and pay for it later?
It's more cost-effective to, to do the 10-year health, life, safety inspection on all buildings at the same time.
Okay.
Typically, districts will do that instead of spending the money, have the architects come on site for just one building and then come back and... The other thing is, you wanna make sure that all of your buildings are on 10-year rotation, so that you don't get in, what you wanna avoid is a situation where the other 10 are on, you know, the other buildings are on one rotation every 10 years, but then this one's every, you know, kind of in the middle of those 10. I, I think it's pretty customary for districts to, to get all of those health, life, safety inspections done at once and, and keep all those buildings on a 10-year rotation.
When was the last inspection?
I think the last 10-year health, life, safety audit was five years ago, six years ago? It was right before my time.
So we'd have, if we did it now, we'd have five years, and then we could do them all again in five years. So we'd just be missing out essentially on five-year, I guess you could consider them wasted years.
I, I don't know that we'll get that much more information...
Okay.
On a health, life, safety inspection now than we have right now. We could, if the board wants to spend that money. I just wanna make sure that the board knows, the architects were in multiple times, multiple architects, not just one. I would not be recommending it to the board if I didn't feel confident that their, their inspection was thorough. If I had any questions, I, I wouldn't be bringing it to the board for consideration. I just don't know how much more, there would be a little bit more, don't get me wrong, but I, I don't know that it would be significant enough to, to cause me to, to put off doing, you know, put off considering the purchase until that health, life, safety inspection were done.
I believe the, the language in the resolution to purchase the property, if there's some major issue after we go in, makes the contract null and void, correct?
If...
I believe I read that.
There's a 30-day window or, there's, there's a window in there that we would have if we found something.
Okay.
30 days after purchase or 30 days from the signing to closing? I'm not...
After purchase.
Okay.
Would we be doing that inspection then before finalizing everything? Is that gonna be factored into the cost?
An inspection? This is, this would be like a home inspection. It's not a health, life, safety inspection. It would be an inspection that you would do to purchase any property you have.
I think more than likely because of the depth that the, the inspection, the, the look has already been. I think what's more likely to happen is if the purchase is approved and we get in the building and start doing the cleanup and some of the minor repairs that need to be done, if we find something in the next 30 days, then the contract becomes null and void, or at least we have some leverage with NICOR to, to see... Or at least we have some leverage with Nycor to, to see compensation for repair or, or consider, uh, voiding the agreement.
How much would a health life safety inspection cost the district?
We'd have to get an estimate from the architect. I, I would guess, um, easily in the twenty thousand dollar range, if not more. But it, it depends on the size of the building and, um, those sorts of things. I would wanna get a, that's a, that's a, um, well, just, it's an estimate on my part. If the, if the board really wanted to consider that, I would encourage the board to wait until we get a, an estimate from the, the architects. But it's, um, it's got some cost to it.
And, and the timeline to schedule something like that?
Probably six months.
Six months?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to sound rash about my decision or my, my impatience to, um, not thoroughly vet this with the community, so to speak. I just think that they've hired us to be, uh, their representatives and it's not hired us, but picked us to be their, their representatives, uh, in this situation. Um, I don't see any other great options in town that provide the same, uh, as, as you mentioned, uh, perfect configuration for our current needs as well as flexibility for future needs, uh, while providing a, you know, an almost four and a quarter million dollar uh, savings to the district. That's hard to, to deny or hard to imagine anybody in the public being upset with, uh, us moving in that direction. I think certainly some of the future use cases that, that have been floated, um, provide some tremendous opportunity for the district to either appreciate additional savings or avoid future costs of, of expansion by having, um, space that we can already move some other facilities into so that we can open up more instructional space elsewhere. So for that reason, I, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of, of moving forward with this now because I can't, I just, I can't fathom a- anybody's complaint compelling me to say, well, let's go look at another option and, and I don't know what any other option would be at this point.
I concur because we were hoping they would even contact us so we could even look at the building a while back. And now opportunities opened up and life school needs a place to go and yeah, they're kinda just, aren't they in the high school, I think?
Yeah, right now, yeah.
And it's hard for students like that to not be settled somewhere, so.
I'm just failing to see how waiting two weeks would cause a significant delay, if a delay at all, but I guess we'd disagree on that, so.
But would we change our mind if one person came forward and complained about it?
Well, I, I think also it's just a perception issue of.
It's not that. It's just that in fourteen years, I haven't seen anybody come forward in two weeks around graduation time to. I mean, you could be right. Maybe we get a bunch of feedback. I, I think it's just a necessary two weeks of delay around, uh, early summer vacation and graduation time that I'd, I'd just be surprised if anybody's paying attention to it.
Well, I guess I'd be surprised too, but I'd, I'd like to give that, give that opportunity. I mean, we'd have a second reading for policy updates, which is in my mind a much more insignificant issue than purchase of real estate. You know, we have seven buildings.
And, and if you lose the property in that time?
I mean, I, I would be shocked if that happened.
Okay, so we're both gonna be shocked. One of us will be shocked.
I don't know, but I, I guess I, I haven't seen people knocking down doors to buy it. The way it was presented to me, I thought we had a contract with Nycor where that couldn't happen.
Uh, I'm sorry if I misspoke. Uh, we sent a, a letter of intent with a, a, a purchase price. That was non-binding. We discussed that kind of at length. Um, non-binding at that point. The next step after they accepted that was to draft the purchase, uh, contract. They've done that. They sent it to us. Our attorneys have looked at it. It's bounced back and forth a couple of times. But we don't have the authority to sign that without the board's approval. So that's what we're seeking tonight. If the board were to approve it tonight, we can actually, you know, begin the process of executing that agreement as early as tomorrow and, and start the process.
Is there any option, if there were to be something that came out, to rescind our offer? If, if that's an option, if we have a thirty day window, that sort of change, I didn't realize that was, was part of it either.
Uh, the purchase price, first of all, um, because of some bonding issues with, with Nycor and we had our attorney look into this cause frankly, I was a little doubtful, but the attorney confirmed it. The two point three million is the minimum purchase price. That was our bid, so to speak. Didn't really create a, a formal bid, but that was the purchase price included in our letter of intent. That was non-binding. Um, Nycor accepted that and that's how we move forward to the, the position that we're in now is drafting a, a purchase contract. But, um, again, we can't sign off on that without the board's approval.
I think his question is if we approved it tonight and we, and we signed that contract and got feedback in the next couple of weeks that made us want to change our minds.
Or there was a material defect with the building we don't know about that happened to pop up, a pipe burst or whatever. Is it possible?
I think that goes to, to best comment earlier. If we find something wrong with the building in that thirty days, then we would have a, a, some leverage to, to, to back out of the deal, yeah.
Or if we just changed our mind?
I don't know if we just decide that we're gonna change our mind. I, I think if it's approved tonight, we sign off on it, we're committed unless we find something in the next thirty days.
There was numerous little situations that would make the contract null and void in the document I read, and I believe it's this, uh, it was one of the, one of the other two.
I'd imagine we'd at least lose our earnest.
Resolution, which is the problem.
Yeah.
You know, if such and such was wrong with the building, it, it was in the language. I know I read it yesterday, so. I read it twice to make sure I was understanding what it said, cause I'm not a lawyer, but I understood it to say if there was some major issue after, you know, the initial, uh, agreement to purchase, then the contract will be null and void.
I, I think you're right, but, but there has to be an issue. It, it, you can't just say, oh, I'm gonna, you know, cancel.
Right, right.
I want my money.
But I don't think we'd wanna back out of it because we need the building.
Yeah, but if you, if you, um, enter into the contract, you have, uh, typically thirty days to, um, you know, conduct an inspection and, and if you can identify a material defect, then, um, you would have the right to either, um, require them to fix it or, um, to de- declare the contract null and void.
Okay.
So we've known about this issue with the current administrative office for some time now because of the updates that need to be made. And now we have the inflated, uh, costs. This is one option that we've been presented with. This is one option that we're aware of and that we've, we've asked a lot of questions about already. I think we've done a lot of digging into it, but what other options have we looked at besides this one?
I, I would say we've been on the hunt, so to speak, and our community, um, for my four years here, been more diligent about that in the last, I would say, year, year and a half. There's some other things kind of occupied our immediate attention. Um, but we knew that this time was coming. So we've been in the hunt. We've been in touch with the local reiter, uh, realtor, asking them to keep their eyes open for space that would, um, fit our needs. Current administration building is about thirty thousand square feet. So, um, there are some office spaces available in town that, that look big until you really start to measure the square footage and you realize that it, it's pretty small compared to what we need. So we've been on the look for a viable space for the last couple of years, especially the last year or so, with the assistance of a local realtor and, and really haven't been able to find anything.
And do we know, um, with updates, I guess maybe it's just a figure that we've looked into is this current building that we're looking to purchase, how long would be, be able to use it for? What is our estimate for how much time we might be able to get out of this building?
That, that's a really good question and, and one that's come up in some correspondence, you know, for the last couple of weeks. And the best example I could use is the, the current administration building's almost a hundred years old. This is, uh, this building on Bethany Road was built in eighty, uh, eighty-two. I think it's reasonable to assume we can get another forty years out of it. Could we go fifty? Maybe? Depends on what happens in the next, you know, in the future beyond our time. Could there be an issue come up sooner than that? I don't know that an architect would be willing to tell you. It's, it's certainly gonna be, you know, this time or a timeframe. I do think it's reasonable to assume that we could get at least forty years out of this building, barring any major, um, unknown issues.
It's just supposed, my ultimate concern would be we purchased the building for two point three million. And then the health life safety study comes back and it's, I don't know, six point eight million and we're, we're actually net negative compared to renovating what we have.
They've had the opportunity to look at everything that would come up during a health life safety inspection, maybe not in, in as, as much detail, but they've had the opportunity to look at everything that they're going to look at for a health life safety inspection. We pushed them multiple times. You see anything that's a red flag? You see anything that's a red flag? The feedback from our archite- architects has been positive from the, from their first walkthrough. I'm really, again, couldn't believe it was kept in good a shape as it was. Um, the structure is good. Uh, a lot of the mechanical systems, all the mechanical systems that they looked at, the electrical. Um, I, I would not recommend it to the board if I felt like there was the possibility that an unknown, significant health life safety issue were out there.
Well, are health life safety reports issues or is, I thought some of it was things that are aging and need to be replaced due to age? Was that a factor or, I guess maybe I misunderstood. I thought the architects were there to look at it and see if there was anything immediately wrong, but not necessarily determine the remaining lifespan.
Oh, yeah.
But that's what the health life safety study would get us.
A health life safety study might get you, would get you a little bit more detail. I don't know that they would be able to tell you how many, how many, exactly how many more years you would get out of it. But again, they looked at everything that, that they would look at when they conducted a health life safety inspection. They didn't see anything that would be caused for immediate concern. Wish, we pushed them on that issue multiple times. Again, we didn't wanna come to the board if we felt like there was any opportunity for that to happen.
I personally have no problem moving forward tonight. So to put that out there along with Eric, I, I have no issues. I'd rather justify moving quickly on this because we will need to move in for the school year than have to try to justify why I'm putting an elevator in a hundred year old building.
That building, it looked old when I moved out here in nineteen eighty-four.
Yeah, again, I, I think the public will appreciate our, our approach on this. I think if, if, if there were people who were constantly monitoring what the district was up to and were going to notice the discussion tonight and follow up in the last two weeks, then they probably would have noticed that this was on the agenda and have been here tonight. And I'm not seeing that, that sort of interest here in the room to understand what our thinking process is. So for me, it's just that the two weeks isn't gonna change any of that. And at the end of the day, we're really talking about, I know two point three million sounds like a big number, but that's four percent of our budget, our annual budget, give or take. And then you talk about saving, selling the existing buildings and taking that number even smaller and now we're talking about two, three percent of our, our budget.
Well, it's not the two point three million that's my concern. It's the ongoing maintenance and the, um, any changes that would need to be made to have this, to allow this building to work for the needs of the district. I know, two point three is nominal. That's not what my, um, concern is, I suppose.
I think just looking at, I mean, looking at these numbers as presented, it, it seems like a sensible choice. Some background, I think to the way, you know, our board makes decisions is, I'd like, it almost seems like we're hyper, we're really short focused or we're really long-term thinking, but like that midterm, five-year focus is just, like I, I would love to see how this fit into like a five-year facility plan. Like it'd be, when I think about the current admin building, it's thirty-five thousand-ish, thirty thousand-ish square feet, two levels. The top level we don't use, we lease. Bottom level is composed mostly of gymnasiums. It's ten thousand square feet occupied approximately. We have seven thousand square foot warehouse space. And when, you know, I, and again, just my initial impression of the admin building is it's, it's relatively empty as most office spaces. So future potential for building use makes a lot of sense. Like I think, oh, okay, well, you know, we're gonna look at this admin building and we've got plans for, I think we've, we've put about every, uh, extracurricular program, you know, we got, we got all sorts of ideas and plans for, um, programs and things to go out of this building, but at the same time, I just think of more under roof space for ongoing maintenance. And it's, it's hard to feel, um, secure making a decision without knowing how it plays into the bigger picture of our district's goals and our district's strategy. And so that's where, while I do acknowledge that waiting two weeks will probably not change anyone's mind. It just, it seems like, it seems like the right thing to do to juxtapose what is our board's either quick or very lengthy process. I mean, it took us three months to go from two meetings to one meeting. And it's gonna take us not even one meeting to, you know, purchase a new building. And the last time I think we did that was ten years ago. So it, it just, I don't know, it.
But that's not true. We've talked about this building in previous executive sessions. It's been multiple meetings.
Right.
But on a radar, at least since February.
Public's business though. I mean, I think the executive session to me doesn't, there was, there was, it was, are they going to let us in? Are they going to let us in? There, there was no like actual review of, of a plan. I mean, this, this information is really useful. And again, it, it's, it does seem like a really good decision. I just, I just don't like the way we're making it. So if we did take a vote tonight, I'd vote no, so. That's where I, like James, that's where I stand, so.
Can you t- talk about the move plans and what your schedule would be like if we moved forward with this as far as the summer? And what, what operations would we expect to have up by when?
Our, our goal would be to, to do all the work necessary as soon as we can. Uh, there's a time period there to complete the purchase and move forward, but, um, it would be tight. But I think that, uh, we could reasonably move the administrative offices over this summer. We could move the warehouse over. This summer, I'm kinda looking up at Mark Ericstrum because he's, uh, gonna be involved in that to some degree until July first. Everybody knows that.
But I guess it's the data center operation's probably the hardest to, especially once classes started up.
The, the advantage, this property in terms of data center that I haven't talked about is that our, our data comes from an NIU building that's right around the corner from this property. So it's close by. What it's gonna take to tap into that and bring the data center online is still a little bit up in the air. We have thought about the idea of moving all of the administrative offices over, but leaving the data center up and running until, you know, uh, until we're ready to make that change, get everything ready at this property, um, and then plan for, you know, probably a one or two day shutdown and move everything over and, um, bring it back up online. So we think that we can phase that, that transition from the data center over in specific. The move, we, we think, again, tight, but we think that we can move the, the administrative offices over and the warehouse this summer.
And we have figures on the administrative updates that would be required to move the administrative office. We have that estimate of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'm also seeing early childhood programs, life school and the data center. I mean, I don't have a figure on that. I would like to at least see an estimate or a figure to consider, um, so there's a cost benefit analysis to be had. Uh, we have that, that was presented, but it doesn't have every single thing that we would like to do with this building included.
Yeah, totally, totally understand. The immediate use would be the administrative offices, the warehouse. That's why we've got the cost on that. If, uh, if we moved, um, any other operations, it would really, you know, the cost of that would depend on the size and the scope of the work. There's a, again, one of the advantages is that there's a lot of open space. There's not walls that you need to tear down. You can really kind of see the, the flexi- flexibility in terms of how you would create that space. Um, but because we're not there, we don't have, uh, estimates from our architect on that. Uh, the immediate use would be the administrative offices, the warehouse. Uh, we know that for sure. Any other use, it would depend, depend on the size and the scope. And again, we, we feel like we can phase that in over, over the coming years.
Do we know when there were last any updates or renovations to this building or any sort of improvements? Maybe that would help me feel a little better.
I, I don't. Obviously there have been some improvements since nineteen eighty-two.
That's what I don't know.
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell you what those were. Um, again, my focus was. Again, my focus was on the architect's perception of everything that they saw, and the positive feedback we got from them.
Well, is there a motion to ask the resolution to purchase property known as nineteen forty-seven Bethany Road, Sycamore, Illinois?
So moved, Jones.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
I would like to see those figures, but we don't have them just yet, and I don't think it would take too much time to get those figures. I understand the sentiment that we want to get moving on this as quickly as possible.
Figures for moving, just any or all operations there, or?
Yeah, estimates for, if we're gonna do early childhood there, if we're going to do life school there, if we're going to do anything else there, it'd be nice to know what the bill's gonna be for that, if that's the intention of this space.
It would take some time to work with the architects to get a floor plan for, I'm gonna use early childhood as an example, it's probably the most significant. I think we're probably months away from having a floor plan and then the cost for that. So, I think that's the timeline for that. Again, it's something that's not immediate, something that we can phase in over the coming years, as long as we have this, you know, assuming that we have this property.
Would it be an option to give the hundred fifty thousand in earnest money, assuming we will purchase, but stipulate in the contract that the board needs more time to make a final decision?
If the board votes to approve the contract, and we execute it, which we would, we'd like to move forward, it's, you know, it starts that thirty day window when Nycor has signed it and executed it, fully executed it.
No, but I'm saying modify the contract to have removal, or we can withdraw from the contract.
I wouldn't even know how to pose that question to our attorney, to tell you the truth.
Okay.
I don't know why you would move forward with a purchase contract if you still want extra time. Does that make sense?
Well, just so we're holding it.
They're not gonna hold it for us.
I wouldn't believe that Nycor would be open to that.
You'd have to create an escrow.
They took a long time to talk to us.
Yeah.
They could demolish the building tomorrow if we don't move forward with this, it was already on their docket to get rid of, so.
Further discussion? Well, there's a motion and a second on the table, so roll call?
DeVito?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Rados?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Koppel?
No.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next item is open discussion, issues, observations, questions?
Sure, one thing the superintendent and I have talked about, I think Michael was looked in, and we've discussed this as a full board as well, would be making some changes to our reports that the board gets every month, and something that the superintendent suggested would be forming an ad hoc committee to work on that. I guess I was, would be interested in doing that. I'm not sure how, I can't remember how to approve that, I mean, I don't know if the board needs to take action on that, or it can happen.
So, what reports are you talking about?
The financial report, these, I guess, the FOIA reports, just the routine reports that we get, the list of bills. We wouldn't, the committee wouldn't make changes, it would just suggest changes, and then the board would approve or reject those. That's something we've talked about. Am I repeating that right?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I remember the board talking about, you know, looking at the different information that's provided. There was a conversation, and I do remember saying that One Avenue could be an ad hoc committee that the board could form. Doesn't need to be a standing subcommittee, but it could be a couple of board members who just work with us to go through the regular routine reports we get, like the financial, the FOIA, the things that you mentioned. Yeah, we could do that, and could be any changes to the content, the format. That'd be an easy avenue to do that, yeah.
I guess I'm just wondering how to make that happen.
Well, I can make that happen. I can appoint an ad hoc committee, so I take it you wanna volunteer to do that?
Yeah, I mean, that would probably be the most size.
I'll place you on that committee, is there anyone else who'd like to serve on that committee? Okay, Michael? Okay.
Are we limited to two?
I think, yeah, for open meetings purposes. So, we'll let you two get together with the superintendent, and maybe Kelly too, I don't know.
I'll reach out to both Alex and Michael, and throw out some dates and some times to have an initial conversation about that.
Yeah, I guess the other thing, if we're doing financial reports, I remember Nicole, you said they're tedious to make. The Forecast Five reports tedious to make, maybe if you could think of something that would be easier for you guys.
The Forecast Five reports aren't, they're very simple to read.
They are, okay, maybe I misunderstood, sorry.
Well, you could bring Nicole into the discussion, I suppose, so.
Well, I guess if you're okay with what you have.
Well, I mean, they're all my reports, the one that you brought up, so I guess I would probably be a part of the conversation then.
And if there are other reports, you know, we can, I can either follow up with those departments, or we can loop them in one way or the other, yeah.
Speaking of ad hoc committees, I was hoping we could also look at putting on the agenda, or maybe forming one committee to form committees, or at least look at our existing committees, because I know we do have some that are inactive, some that are, you know, maybe haven't met in a long time. And I think that, I don't know the best vessel to do that, but that was another I thought or idea.
That's a good idea, I was gonna ask about.
I, I.
We had a lot of committees that we don't even.
I think that if you're, if this subcommittee that we just appointed would be willing to look into that as well, that would be, that'd be, would you be willing to do that too?
Sure, I mean, that's probably a matter of.
Only if it could be a subcommittee to that ad hoc committee, that would be the only term I would.
If you say. No, but I think, yeah, you could make that part of your charge, the ad hoc committee to look at the reports. Look at the reports and look at future committees, I was just thinking about this today, actually.
Could we throw board docs in there too, I know we were talking about board docs, how, I assume they would go together, but I don't know if we need the board's explicit green light for that, but how we use board docs as a sort of ancillary piece to the reports, because the reports go to board docs, but there is a sort of hierarchy in board docs, board docs that right now is kind of, let's say, at will. There's some old stuff in there, there's some new stuff in there, and when I talked about this at some prior meetings, I know Kelly and Steve brought mention of, like, well, if there was a clear direction of like what that would look like, it would be helpful, so that way they're not just kind of.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that's part of the whole, kind of the whole package that you're looking at there, so. I'd say, yeah, go ahead.
Makes a lot of sense, we can loop, Kelly, she is the master of board docs, so we can loop her in on that as well.
Yeah.
I got a notice from Super Eval about finishing an evaluation by the thirty-first. And I went in there, but there was nothing I could do, so is that, I wasn't able to do, access it. I mean, I got into my account, but I couldn't do anything, so is there?
Nothing in there right now, but I've been talking to Jim about getting that done, and actually, one of the things we've talked about before is maybe changing that format back to something more traditional, that might be a little bit easier.
Okay.
So, we're working on that right now too, so, nothing to do now, but stay posted, because you might hear something soon.
Okay.
Future agenda items? I suppose that some of these reports will come up on future agendas, so I think we're in good shape there.
Well, would any recommendations just pop up on consent? And then if you, for some reason, don't like the recommendation, you would pull it, and we could talk about it further? Or, I'm just trying to think how you guys would want this.
You'd have to work it through the superintendent, and then he'd have to send it out.
I could send out information, or we could make it an agenda item in a meeting.
Yeah, it's an open meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm, Michael or I couldn't share with you guys what our findings are.
No, but you, but you could, you could share with Steve, and Steve can then.
Sure, sure.
Each and every one of us.
Could we, as a future agenda item, put on the superintendent evaluation timeline as something to look at? I know we talked about maybe putting something after our board workshop. One of the, I think the first items that Ms. Martinez recommended was adopting the IASB's timeline. I know we have a timeline, but their timeline might be a worthwhile timeline to adopt. And then I know that Steve had some, we had some dialogue, where you had a revised timeline that I thought seemed more than reasonable, but it.
Yeah, and that would fit in with, I think, with what we've, what Steve and I have been working on in terms of evaluation, so.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll, yeah, it'll be there, yeah. Other issues, future agenda items?
We have a meeting June eleventh, correct? There's a special meeting?
It's one of the meetings we set aside as for a board admin retreat, so that meeting's on the schedule, yeah.
Okay.
And then the next regular meeting would be June twenty-fifth, Tuesday, yeah.
Any other future agenda items? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.